Good evening. This regular meeting of October 12th, 2020 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And... Let the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 14th, 2020 as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 14th, 2020 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. And I believe we have some board salutes. Ms. Parks?
The board salute goes to the district's six 2021 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. These semifinalists are among 16,000 students across the country chosen from an initial pool of 1.5 million students who began the process for the 2021 competition by taking the PSAT exam. These semifinalists now move forward in the process for the opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,600 National Merit Scholarships worth more than $30 million that will be offered next spring. This year, our district National Merit Scholarship semifinalists are Kunal Chu from Hempstead High School, Charles Feigen Hempstead High School, Samantha Fish Hempstead High School, Luke Coats Hempstead High School, Justin Ringgold Dubuque Senior High School, Brendan Stahl Hempstead High School. Becoming a semifinalist is a tremendous honor, and a big congratulations goes to these students for representing our district well.
It's a great number.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Sancy? Yes?
Yeah, just want to give a huge shout out to the Dubuque Low Store for their ongoing support as the district tries to navigate all the health and safety efforts during COVID. Just this year alone, Low has donated over 90 gallons of hand sanitizer, 300 gloves, 40 pails of wipes, 2,000 masks, and 28 boxes of tissues. So we just want to give a huge shout out to our Dubuque Low's. I know they were a huge supporter during the Back to School back, so we just want to thank them for all their efforts and support.
Great, thank you. Ms. Prohaska?
Yes. Uh, board salute goes out to Dubuque Bank and Trust, who recently surprised Prescott Elementary School with a $20,000 donation made through its partnership with AdoptAClassroom.org. Dubuque Bank and Trust has been a longtime business partner with Prescott Elementary School, and bank president Tut Fuller made the announcement at his surprise meeting with Prescott staff to kick off World Teacher Day, which I believe was a week ago. Uh, the donation is intended to purchase tools and materials that will support student success. The school is currently putting together a plan to most effectively use the donation thanks to DB&amp;T, Heartland Financial, and AdoptAClassroom.org for their support of our students.
Great, thank you. Any others? Okay. Next item.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And we will start with, if any person's wishing to address the board can do so at this time, and we will start with Amy Unmack, who's here for the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools.
Well, I want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk about the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools. When I started as the executive director two years ago, I had a goal to raise awareness of our mission and partnership with the Dubuque Community School District and the impact we have on the staff and students. As a former parent and employee of the Dubuque Community School District, I didn't have idea of the impact the foundation had until I started in this position a few years ago. So I wanted to take a few minutes today just to kind of explain our mission, our vision, and what we have done in the past and what we hope to do in the future. First of all, we work together, the Dubuque Community School District and the Foundation works together, and we are a nonprofit, the Foundation is, and we are overseen by a Board of Directors comprised of former school board members, educators, Dubuque Community School District parents, and community leaders. Our mission is to support student achievement by promoting investment in the Dubuque Community Schools. And our vision is that all Dubuque Community School District students will have the resources they need to succeed. The Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, we are creating a permanent funding source for the Dubuque Public Schools by raising an endowment that has a payout every year that goes back to programs and projects within the school districts. We work with local businesses and private individuals to have a general endowed and designated funds that go for educational purposes. We facilitate fundraising campaigns to support ongoing needs and special projects and programs in the district that is not covered by the annual budget. We collaborate with school personnel on grant writing and provide grant management services. And we continue to support the school district with their mission of developing world-class leaders and learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. We recently had our FDPS Annual Luncheon right here in the room virtually, where we talked even more about what we do and had a short video for everyone to watch. You can go onto our website where you can view that video and watch the entire program. Some of the programs that we've supported in the past are the Personal Empowerment Training for Dubuque Community School Staff, field trips for entire grade levels, Student Support Foundation for our high school students, Burkhart Library Grants, Classroom Teacher Grants, AP Testing for Students on Fee Waivers, Musical Instruments for Students, and we have recently received an additional $100,000 gift over five years from the Kendall Hunt and Fall family, STEM events, classroom yoga programs, the project-based learning opportunity in the ALC Tiny House, which was sold this summer, and that money went back into the fund for future project-based learning. We've helped with the Women's Empowerment Conference, and we facilitated the Barriers Project last year, which collaborated with Cottingham and Butler. How we responded once the pandemic hit. So come March, we flipped and pivoted just like everyone else. We received grant funding to help the district purchase mobile hotspots for families lacking in internet access. Donors came forward to purchase literacy books, educational and recreational activities. STEM kits were put together that was handed out at our meal sites over the spring and summer. I was lucky enough to be part of handing those out, and I love to see the kids' smiles when you gave them a new book or any of the activities. But the books really brought a smile to my face, too, that they were excited. When we switched to going back into the classroom, we purchased thermometers for every family in the district with the help of the community foundation and their Dubuque Disaster Recovery Fund. We also purchased 560 bottles of sunscreen for our elementary students as they were going back outside, and dry erase markers. And coming from a math teacher, that was huge. We gave those to our families that were learning from home because as a teacher, you cannot see pencil on a piece of paper held up to a computer. So we were happy to be able to do that. One of our current projects that we're working on is our open closets in our secondary schools. The purpose of the open closet is to provide basic needs for students who may not have access to the items in the following areas: food pantry, clothing closet, toiletries, bus passes, and hygiene items. The goal is to help these students get to school to focus on their future instead of what they're wearing or where they're going to find the money for dinner, thus reducing the social stigma associated with the lack of essential needs. The open closet will give students direct and discreet access to what they need, when they need it, free of charge. Basic clothing items will be in a variety of sizes, and the hygiene items will be purchased new and/or donated. The need is great in our schools, and I am working with several local businesses that are helping us get those items at a reduced cost. Now, we need support. Without individual support and businesses' support, we would not be able to do this. All the funding that we receive goes toward our mission of enhancing the education of the students in the Dubuque Community School Districts. You can go to our webpage and donate, or you can send funds directly to the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools. And on that webpage, you can see that luncheon that was on September 30th. We also have dine-out takeout coming up on October 15th. We have 18 participating restaurants, and the proceeds from this event will support the projects and programs in our district. And the easiest one would be when shopping, Amazon, choose the FDPS nonprofit, and Amazon will donate a portion of the sales back to the district. I ask that you help raise awareness and share our stories with the others. Additional funding is needed to support projects and programs, and with additional needs this year, funding is needed now more than ever. I thank you for allowing me to come in, talk about the foundation, and I would like to continue it as a yearly event so that we can give updates to the district and the community on our impact if possible.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great work.
Just in case Mike wants to know, the tiny house couldn't fit my body, so I didn't buy it personally, so I know he was thinking that.
It was that obvious.
Well, thank you for what the Foundation does for the schools. Every year, you guys do more and more, and the classrooms and the buildings appreciate it so much, and it is needed. It's able to fund stuff that our budget can't handle, and it's the important stuff that we still want to see happen in our building, so thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for like, I know you provided services during the COVID crisis, which is still ongoing, and also just you provide services that are ongoing needs of our students. So once again, thank you so much.
Okay, do we have...
At this time, if there are any individuals who are on the Zoom session who wish to address the board, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom to signify that you wish to speak. Okay, I see one so far. I do not see a name associated with this, so if you could begin here in just a minute, I'll allow you to give your computer the ability to speak, but please start with your name and address for the record. And you should now be able to speak.
Hi, my name is Nikki Winter. I live at 16002 Majestic Drive, which is in the Carver District. I have two children there that are attending, and as a nurse and a working mother of three total kids, I'm very sympathetic and empathetic to, you know, both sides of everything that is going on with the COVID pandemic. The reason that I really wanted to address the board today was I feel like there's been little communication going on between what we are doing to move forward in the pandemic with the schools. Obviously, this hybrid is intended than, you know, not going to school at all or completely virtual learning, but I feel like it's put a big impact on our community and on parents. And, you know, curious as to what our progress is moving forward, if this is, you know, realistically looking at it as a full year or until COVID numbers reach a certain point or there's vaccines. It just doesn't seem like there's a lot of communication going out about what our next steps are. I feel that through the hybrid system, we're learning, but it's creating a large gap between us and the communities around us that are going full-time. There's a, you know, gap between all the basic essential things that the kids are going to school for, nutrition, welfare, their emotional and behavioral building skills. And I think that, I'm hoping that we are making a move towards somehow coming up with a plan to get to full-time. Because right now, even if the kids are going half the time and we're condensing down to smaller classrooms, they're still being exposed when they have to go to daycare, and it's creating a larger amount of people they're in contact with than just going full-time, I think. And I'm just wondering if, you know, things are being done to facilitate this, research is being used, what the other countries have done. You know, I just, I see this as a whole generation of kids that are kind of at a disservice, unfortunately, to no fault of their own. I don't, you know, parents weren't really given a choice about this, and I understand that this kind of came out of nowhere, and no one prepared for anything like this. But, you know, are we getting creative to make spaces in the gyms, the cafeterias, using Plexiglas? Are we, you know, thinking outside the box to get, you know, to stay progressive in getting them back into time? With the recent fast testing, it has, you know, has shown that the kids have degressed more than average. And, you know, school is essential, and, you know, looking at research from medical journals and American pediatrics, you know, case 5 especially, this is a huge time for them learning development-wise, and they really can't be left to be self-directed on their own. And unfortunately, you know, it's either a working parent goes and does their full day of work and then comes home and tries to feed and bathe their kids and spend that time that they need to nurture their kids and then go on to do the learning, or it's given to grandparents that have a hard time with it, or caregivers, or even older siblings, and then that affects them as well. So I guess I'm just hoping that there's some plan or some movement in place that we're heading in a direction that this isn't a permanent thing for the year, and just asking for some general information on where the board plans or trying to get things on a better track for our kids.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Winter. We are not going to take the time right now to respond to your questions and concerns, but it is something that we always take into consideration, and I do believe we will have some information in our ed programs report from the superintendent about our return to learn and some information to share, at least as statistic-wise of, not necessarily a plan right now, but we will take a look at things as we go forward.
And that's coming up a little later in the meeting, so in case that was just if you wanted to stick on, that might give you some information, and then we can talk later as well.
Great, thank you. Is there any...
If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, please use the raised hand feature. Seeing none.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm a little, I forget. Sorry, guys online, I forget you're there, the delay.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Any board members wish to have any items pulled from the consent agenda? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us to our Facilities Support Services Committee report. Mr. Donahue?
Yes, good evening. There is a reason there's a delay there, Tammy. It's because Mr. Sancy is worried I might delve into a chronology about college football this past week, so he's asked the delay be put in.
Got it.
Our committee, our committee met on October 5th, and in addition to some updates on some summer projects that are wrapping up, we had an update on the senior Phase 2 project and a review of our 2019-2020 financial targets, which I think for those listening or viewing, it can take some heart in the fact that the district performed slightly better than we had anticipated, but anybody, everybody knows that maintaining a strong financial position in education these days is a job that knows no end, so we take that and celebrate that, but know that there's a lot of work to be done. Um, I have a series of motions, a number of projects wrapping up, as well as a couple of annual action needs to be taken regarding our, our, some of our spending, the unspent authority. So the first one I've got is I move that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Conlan Construction Company on the Alta Vista Vocational Technology Classroom Edition project in the decreased amount of $4,679.83.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Conlan Construction Company on the Alta Vista Vocational Technology Classroom Edition project in the decreased amount of $4,679.83. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next.
The second motion, I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete LLC in the amount of $8,894.60 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School Parking Lot Expansion Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete LLC in the amount of $8,894.60 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School Underground Geothermal Vault Replacement Project as all project costs have been paid to A1 Geothermal, Inc., in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hempstead High School Underground Geothermal Vault Replacement Project as all project costs have been paid to A1 Geothermal, Inc., in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 28E agreement with the City of Dubuque on the Prescott Neighborhood Resource Center.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 28E agreement with the City of Dubuque on the Prescott Neighborhood Resource Center. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I also move that the Board of Education approve the 29, the 20 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
The next two items for action are, really represent annual actions that we take to recover unspent authority in the areas of special education in our LEP program. The first one, I move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $5,766,709.30 or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE Audit Review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2020 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $5,766,709.30 or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE Audit Review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2020 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy. Is there any discussion?
Tammy, I would just make one comment. I think it's important for our stakeholders to understand that deficits are always concerning, but with the district's action in making the capital investment in the Alta Vista addition, this, we've essentially reduced this deficit, and Kevin can nod or shake his head, but I believe the number was about $3 million that we were able to reduce that deficit.
Yeah, Mike, we were able to not sign the contract for those services and do them in-house. The savings was probably closer to, I would say, $6,700,000 in instructional costs, but then we had about a million-dollar savings in the rental of facility costs. So adding those two together is definitely a significant savings to the district.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
The next item, I move the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $329,085.97 or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE Audit Review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2020 excess costs of the LEP program funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $329,085.97 or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE Audit Review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for the 2020 excess costs for the LEP program funded through a cash reserve levy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the last item I have for action is I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Mr. Kelleher, you will present the budget report.
Thank you. Just a few items to...
Thank you. Just a few items to talk about, and really, these are reminders that we discuss every year at this time of year with regards to our budget. We are 25% through the year, but if you were to look at page 85 of the Management Fund specifically, you'll see we are at a 90% level for our expenditures and encumbrances, and that is because we pay in July for all of the full fiscal year's liability and work comp insurance, which is a significant expense inside that fund. Also, a couple other things. On page 89 of your packet, the General Fund Revenue, as I said, we're 25% through the year, but you only see about 14% collection of revenue. There's a couple reasons for that. One is the state aid payments that we receive, we only receive 10 months. We don't receive 12 months. So, they start paying those in September. So, as well as our property taxes, the large portion of our property taxes are paid in October and April. So, once those payments come in in future months, that percentage will grow closer to where we are throughout the year. Same thing with the Management and Pebble Levy. As I said, the property taxes don't come in until, a large portion come in in October. So, once we get through October, you'll see those percentages in those particular months will increase to match where we are in the fiscal year. That's all I have at this point. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. That takes us to our educational and program.
Good afternoon, everyone. We had our educational program meeting on October 6th, and I'd like to highlight the topics that we went over. Amy Hawkins, Chief Human Resource Officer, presented an early retirement waiver. Mark Burns presented a renewal for the concurrent courses that we have with NICC, a contract renewal. We looked over an annual review of the Emergency Operations Plan. And Indigenous Peoples' Day Proclamation is going to be held on October 17th honoring Indigenous people, and the district is a participant in this organization of this event. And we have Taj here to tell us a little bit about this.
So, the event, it will take place on the 17th, the 17th Saturday at between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM, Dubuque Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was organized originally by the MFC, the Multicultural Family Center, the Musqueqie Nations, University of Dubuque, and Dubuque Museum of Art. There will be educational presentations. The Musqueqie group and dancers will provide also kind of a cultural performance as well. So, we encourage you, we encourage the community to participate. It will be in Washington Park, 700 Locust Street. And if there's any question, please ask me.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Taj. I hope you have a lot of people attending. Next item that we want to talk about is the school calendar. As you know, every other year, those are updated. So, we're in the process of getting, first of all, we gather input from the teacher quality committees, DSO, online from parents and other individuals. And the timeline that we'd like to hit is to present this to the Education Policy Committee, the proposal for the 2021-22 and 2022-23 calendar at our December meeting, and look at the board giving approval at the December board meeting.
Absolutely. So, again, if you're hearing that for the first time, if you're on Zoom, there'll be plenty of opportunity to give input or feedback, and so we can pull that together and present it to the board and hopefully make that decision prior to, or at the December meeting. So, those folks who need to know on January 1st will have that information.
We like to do that every two years, so we have two consecutive years with the same calendar. It helps families budget their time and schedule vacations and everything else. The next thing, we talked about return to learn, and as you know, masks and social distancing are the key to those, keeping those COVID numbers low. And we have a lot of students with fully online and hybrid, and we're finding that a lot of our students are switching to become, wanting to come to school. Currently, we have about 77% of our students at hybrid, 23 are fully online. And Stan would like to highlight a little bit, give us a little more detail on those numbers and how things are going.
Yeah, so I'll, a couple of things. First off, how we've transitioned or how families have transitioned from online to hybrid or not. You know, we've, from the beginning of this, believed in parental choice as being a pretty significant component of this because we've all experienced the pandemic differently. Some very mildly, or hardly at all, and others significantly with family members, grandparents, that sort of thing. So, we want families to have choice so that they can do what's right for their families. So, we started the school year, and Mike's going to put a few slides up. They might be a little bit behind. Takes a second for him to roll up on the Zoom. So, in the first slide. Second slide.
It's moving. It's working.
Okay, so you'll see the dark numbers are where we started, and the light numbers are where we're at currently. So, we have a very slight increase in students who have come back to the hybrid mode from the fully online. But again, those are percentages of a large number. So, there have been some significant movement in some of our groups towards hybrid. We believe a lot of that has to do with the experience that they have talking to their neighbors or finding out that we are running a safe situation, so it is safe for their kids to come to school in hybrid. And in some cases, quite honestly, the fully online hasn't worked great for parents, and we want them to have an opportunity to come back and have the hybrid experience. So, if we break it down a little bit further, our students who receive special education, as you might imagine, there's a lot, there's a level of intensity there, in many cases of teacher support, professional support. So, we have seen some shift there from 71% hybrid to 74%. That 3% difference equates to 34 students. So, it is a significant number of students who've come back to the hybrid. Students on free and reduced lunch. So, you see a movement there from 65% to 67%. That equates to 82 students who have come back to, from fully online to the hybrid every other day situation. Our ELL students. And then our last slide that I'll share there is broken down by race, race slash ethnicity. You'll see some have stayed relatively similar, and some have larger change. So, if you go to the Black African Americans group, was 48% in hybrid, it's now 56%. So, that's an increase of 84 students who have come back to school for the hybrid situation. So, we do see movement. We believe that at the trimester, which is the middle of November, we may see more because families were asked to make a decision based on the trimesterly system at the elementary and middle school, and for the semester at the high school level. So, we believe there could be some more movement there as well. Really gets me into my next point, and the question I get the most when I'm in the community is when will we be back, at least the hybrid students, every day versus the every other day? We do monitor our data every single day. We produce a dashboard. It updates around 3:30 every afternoon. So, you can go to that dashboard and see how many current cases we have with our students or staff members, and that gives you a little understanding of kind of the situation in the district. We also monitor the districts who surround us, as was mentioned earlier. We look at our county numbers, our positivity rates of those who are testing, and how many of those tests turn out to be positive, as well as the state numbers, the CDC guidelines and recommendations, which we've done kind of from the beginning, and we've put that out there. So, to let you know, today, we have 15 total people on our dashboard, eight students and seven adults. So, when we get the, so that number has varied from a high of 41. Two weeks after Labor Day, we were at 41. We've decreased steadily. We've had a few days where we were as low as six or seven. But we've averaged in that 14, 15, 16 cases pretty consistently since then. We peaked out at 41. So, what do we look for when we see those numbers? We look for commonalities. We look to see, are these siblings? Are these in the same family? Do they live together? We look to see if they're in the same school? Are they in the same grade? Are they on the same A-Day, B-Day? So, what we're looking for is spread that happens in school. Happy to report that because of our current system, we see almost no indication that spread is happening at school. Overwhelming percentage of our students and our staff members, when the contact tracing is done either by ourselves or the VNA, which is in charge of doing that for the county, the largest percentage of the time it happens in the home. There's a parent who tested positive or a sibling, and then the family tends to get it, and that's common sense, right? That we live together. So, we don't see significant spread. In fact, we're not sure we've seen any spread of that happen in the school situation, which leads to our caller's question earlier, right? So, if we don't have spread, then when do we make the decision to come back? And so, we're trying to look at that data and make those decisions because is that lack of spread because of masks? Is it because of social distancing? Is it because of the way our building and grounds crew have upped the regularity and the type of cleaning that we do? Is it all of those things? And one indicator, one dataset is looking at other school districts who aren't in the hybrid mode, and what is their experience? So, we do track that in other districts our size. A few have brought back their elementary students. I don't know of any who've brought back the K-12 situation. We are trying to find that sweet spot, right? I mean, it's really important that we not bring students back too soon because we don't want to put them or our staff, and our staff tend to be in a big, a little bit more precarious situation than our students if you look at the data and who gets sick or significantly sick and who doesn't, or keeping them out too long. Because keeping them out too long is counter everything that we've tried to build for 150 years in the school district. We want our kids in school with our teachers, with our coaches, with our extracurricular activities. We want that full experience for all of our kids. And so, what we're looking for in that data and looking at the CDC guidelines and the other guidelines is trying to find out when is that right time? To be honest, my overall frustration has to do more with the county percentage rates. We are at today 14.2%. And so, we, at one point, if you set the clock back three months, if we'd have been at 14.2%, we might have been talking about should we be going out to fully online? And we found that our system works even at that elevated rate. So, I'm not saying that we're any, we're not looking at that. We were really having a conversation. And if I had, you know, three months ago, I would have been thrilled to know that our conversation is about should we be in hybrid or should we be in attendance with the kids who have chosen hybrid versus hybrid versus fully online. So, we are one step towards the positive, but now it is looking towards those percentages. The schools, and I talk a lot about the Urban Education Network, so the schools that look the most like us, the large schools in the state, those who have brought portions of their student bodies back tend to be in counties that have between a 6% and 7% rate, not the 14.2% rate. So, we are, we are looking at that data. I promise you, we talk about it ad nauseam every single day, this morning for multiple hours, trying to figure out when will that opportunity come? Because we are, the most common question I get from teachers as well, it's not just parents, is when can we have our kids back? Because they really want their students back. But they understand that there's a, there's a risk both ways. Keep them out too long, not good for kids. Bring them back too early, not good for students or staff. So, we're looking at that data, our experience as well as others, our current experience. Somebody might look at 15 and say that's a large number, but it's out of 10,000 people that we track. So, it's a very small percentage. And again, that spread is not happening during the school day. It's when students potentially are at work themselves, or maybe a family member tests positive, or in some cases, I'm sure, social situations, especially for our high school kids who have been quarantined for quite a long period of time.
So, that 15 number, that's, if, like, when you say if someone in their household tested positive, that means they have to quarantine, correct?
No, the 15 of it means they are actually tested positive.
Actually tested positive. Okay, got it.
These are confirmed positive cases. So, we do a phone meeting. My staff does a phone meeting every day with the VNA to check most recent number of cases, and so we get names and addresses, that sort of thing, and look at the contact tracing. Or if a staff member or a family contacts us and they have a doctor's order saying that they have tested positive, we accept that as well. What we don't is if somebody just calls and says, hey, I think, you know, Junior's positive because somebody else in the neighborhood is, we can't count them as a positive until we have a scientific verification of that through the VNA or through your doctor. So, we, things are going very well, better than, quite honestly, I had anticipated. But we do still have some cases. The county numbers aren't where I wish they were, but we are actively looking at how can we bring students back into school on a regular, everyday basis? If we do that, we will most likely continue to offer choice. So, the families who really want the online-only experience, for whatever reason drives them that way, would be able to maintain that at least for some additional period during the school year. And so, that would mean in our current scenario, that 77% of our students are back. And so, how could we create social distancing opportunities with that number of kids? And that's a challenge. The challenges are choke points, right? Our challenges are lunch. Our challenges are school buses. Our challenges are those things where there's just no way to fully ensure social distance, or in the case of lunch, you have to take the mask off, right? You can't eat your lunch with your mask on. So, looking at ways that we can do lunch in classrooms and alternative spaces, but how are we moving the system towards that day when students can come back? The question was, is this for the whole year? I certainly don't anticipate that or hope that. We are looking at this, and I'm hopeful to bring back to the board some recommendations in the near future about how we can begin the process of having more of our students there every day. I have a son who's a sophomore, and he would definitely benefit from being in school every day versus every other day. So, I get it from a parent perspective as well.
Thank you, Stan. As, as you go, continue talking, there are so many variables, and we trust that you and the immediate people in your staff that count these numbers, look at these reports daily, are doing the best you can, and everyone wants to be back in school. So, we hope that happens soon.
And Stan, today I happened to see a headline that said, "Teachers and Parents Are Stressed Out," right? And the parent who talked earlier, you can kind of hear a little bit about being overwhelmed. And I think one thing that's very important, as I talk to you seems like every other day, and tell you about things that I hear from parents or people online, is for those parents who do feel overwhelmed, and please confirm if I'm right or wrong, they work full-time, they're working parents, and they get home, they're trying to love on their child and also educate their child. Our district wants to work with those parents as well. So, we're not trying to put extra stress on them. So, if they feel overwhelmed, they can contact their teacher or their principal, and we'll work with them, right?
Absolutely. Well, you know, this is, as I had mentioned in an earlier meeting, we basically created two school districts over the course of the summer. A hybrid district that was unlike anything that we'd ever done with students in the past, and an online district, which was clearly like something we'd never done in the past. So, you know, there was some growing pains as we started with the online. You know, was it enough? Was it too much? Was it, you know, what's the, what's the volume of the work? Likewise with the hybrid, you know, what is that spot that keeps students moving and learning at a pace to learn the things they need to learn in their third grade or fifth grade or 10th grade year, but also not create a situation that's overwhelming? And so, initially, we were hearing from some families that students had, you know, two hours worth of work during the hybrid day, and others having eight or 10 hours worth of work. And some of that was just our right sizing of the system to make sure that students were taking the right amount of, or having a right amount of access to educational facilities. The other piece is technology. We have purchased significant amount of technology, both hotspots as well as laptops, so that students all have access to the internet and access to their teachers and those other learning experiences. Not all of our laptops that were supposed to be back in on August 10th. They're still back ordered. There's a national or an international shortage of laptops, so we're hoping for those to be in shortly. But we've worked pretty hard to make sure that that's, that that is accessible to students. But I, you know, I agree. There's, in my opinion, as a professional educator, there's nothing quite like being in school. That's really hard to replicate that, and we really want to get back to that situation as soon as we safely can for all of our, for all of our kids and for our staff. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of what we do is for our staff as well because we can't have schools without great teachers, without bus drivers, without food service workers, without all the people who make it happen. They tend to be in that age range that are a little bit more susceptible to long-term. They tend to be in that age range that are a little bit more susceptible to long-term. Sometimes you have short-term significant health issues. So trying to balance all of those things to figure out how do we get kids back where they need to be, which is in school.
So I say that to say that regardless if you're a teacher or a parent, and I hope this is not sounding as I'm preaching to the audience or everyone in here, but we're going to get through this together, right? Everyone's reality is different. It's very stressful, it's very overwhelming. But that message from the board to the teachers, to the parents, to the community is we're going to get through this together. So if you're overwhelmed as a parent, please contact your, your principal and your leadership team and they will help you. If you're, are a teacher who are dealing with whatever, contact your leadership team and they will help you. And we're all going to get through this together, right?
Absolutely. And we have some of our professionals who just have a health history, which would make being back in a school something that's just not right or possible for them now. And so as I mentioned earlier, we would likely continue with the online education for really the foreseeable future. So there will be opportunities for our staff members with health concerns to continue to work, you know, from, from a distance as well. Because we don't, especially for someone who's got a predictable health situation. So we'll have plenty of those opportunities as we, as we move forward, I believe. Harder to work.
Anderson, as you're suggesting that we'll work with parents who are feeling a great deal of stress about the hybrid schedule, I, I get that. Just to be clear, are you suggesting that we would look at a different kind of schedule for such children in that situation? I'm assuming not. But I would ask for clarity about that.
So for me specifically, and I've had a few parents who reached out to me and said they're overwhelmed, they're working whatever their time period is. And so what I've suggested to them is the fact that they could reach out to their principal and talk about how could I help my child in the time period that I, that I have specifically? So I think a lot of parents feel overwhelmed, like as soon as I get home, I have to do all of these different work schedules for my child. It's like, just, just slow down, let's take a breath and understand that the district is not going to leave you hanging. And I think that's the message that I think a lot of parents need to hear from us. And I know that they're hearing it already, but just reminding them that just contact us and whatever your situation is, we're going to work with you to deal with your child specifically. Again, everyone's reality is different, but they need to know that we're here to help them out.
The other thing that I would add to that, and we put out a video every couple of weeks where the union and myself and Amy sit down and talk through what are the frequently, most frequently asked questions. And so I would put that in reverse as well, that we have staff members who aren't used to working remotely or even in the hybrid situations being sort of on 24/7, if you will. And so working with our staff to make sure that they understand that there are some, some limits to their workday too. Just because you're teaching an online class doesn't mean that you have to be available 24/7 and answer email the second it comes in. They have to draw some boundaries too, so that we can keep them, you know, in, in their place where they need to be so they can continue to do a great job with our kids. So it is, it's, it is stressful for, for everyone. We are trying to work through this and we are looking at the data that is within the district as well as neighboring districts and districts around the state and, and looking at the guidelines and working towards that day where we can get our kids back.
Great.
This might be an opportunity, this might be an opportunity for us to remind, in a county where we have a 14.2% positivity rate, I think it's a reminder to all of us to stay masked, to physically distance, to do the hand washing, that we can do, we can, all of us want our kids back in school. That's, that's a given. So I'm hoping that as we all get more consistent about masking and distancing and all of that, that we'll see that 14.2% come down to a more, to a rate where we really can start to seriously talk about altering the current options for kids.
I just wanted to make one additional comment. Acknowledge that our technology department, that reaching out with our devices and online students, all of this has been made possible by our wonderful technology department. And I, I feel like there's maybe only a handful where they've kind of struggled to connect with. Otherwise, we've been very successful.
Our technology department is unbelievable. They are probably understaffed and overworked, but they make it work. Kobe has to remind me from time to time that things don't just happen automatically, that I have to build in a little time to give the IT folks. But they do a fantastic job of supporting our families in the district.
Yep.
Great. All right. And we, also in that committee meeting, we reviewed six different policies that came up for renewal or new ones. So that was it, Tammy.
Great, thank you. Okay, that takes us to new business and we've got a couple proclamations. If I could have.
I'm sorry. There's an action item in the.
I move that the Board of Education approve the emergency operations plan.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the operation.
I'm sorry.
Plan that has been submitted. Is there any discussion?
I would be happy to just say this is an annual update. This is a cabinet document, you all received a copy of it. All the changes have been reviewed by our law enforcement partners and we would ask for your annual approval tonight.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now that takes us to our new business with a couple proclamations. If I could have a motion and we'll vote and then I'll read them.
I move that the Board of Education approve Brain Health Awareness Month proclamation.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Brain Health Awareness Month proclamation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and I shall read the proclamation. Whereas brain health is critical to everyone's well-being and whereas, whereas the brain is an organ susceptible to disease and disorder with a biological and neurological basis that often can be successfully treated and whereas awareness and education is pivotal to end the stigma around mental illness and whereas brain health issues are now increasingly prevalent during the pandemic, whereas the, with effective education, coordinated services and treatment, those individuals, individuals with brain health issues and those that provide services in this area can work together for recovery in a stigma-free environment. Therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, to hereby proclaim October 2020 as Brain Health Awareness Month, signed on this 12th day of October. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approve Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Second.
It has, it has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And the proclamation reads, whereas the Dubuque Community School District is proud to be a diverse and culturally rich school district, recognizing that the varied heritage of our students and staff create a vibrant environment in which to learn and live. Whereas a growing number of cities and school districts in the United States have recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to celebrate indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District recognizes that the indigenous peoples of this hemisphere that lived on these lands since time immemorial and that Dubuque itself was built upon the homelands of the Mosquaki, Ho'ou'unk, Potawatomi and the indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District acknowledges and honors the historic, cultural and contemporary significance of the indigenous people of the islands that also became known as the Americas. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District seeks to bring greater understanding regarding indigenous cultures and the enormous contributions they have made and continue to make. Now therefore, I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day, signed on this date. All right. We have that as well. Are there any other board member or administrative issues?
I, I have a question that I'd like to bring up and I was approached by a couple of parents in this regard. And I don't want to be a foreboder of the future or weather, but in light, in light of our virtual learning and, and things of that nature that are going on, what will be our status when it comes to snow days?
So for this year, the state has allowed for virtual learning to count for snow days. So we're, we're trying to work through a process. As I had mentioned earlier, not all of our technology is coming yet. So we're not one-to-one with all of our elementary students. Should that come in, in November and early December as it's supposed to? And if we can predict with some certainty when a snow day might occur so that the students have the technology home with them and those sorts of things. You know, certainly if we would have a long range, like, okay, there's the storm of the century coming, you know, again this week, then we would make sure that we sent the technology home with students and, and they would be prepared for that. If it's one of those, you know, I wake up at four in the morning and go drive around and we have to cancel school, we probably, so it's going to depend a little bit. We're trying to get some, some, what does that day look like? How do students log in? Get that all ironed out before it gets to be winter. Would be helpful for us to know if the state is going to allow that in future years as well. Right now, we don't know that. It's just for this year because of all of the other disruptions. If we knew that going forward, that was always going to be allowed, then we would certainly look at the amount of resources we put into making sure that that was available for us because we hate to spend too much money to have two or three. We normally, in a normal year, have had a normal year for a while, but in a normal year, we have four snow days. So that's kind of what that is. But if we knew that for all of the future years, we'd be able to capitalize on distance learning days on those snow days, then we would certainly put the appropriate amount of resources into that. But for, for one year, to make up two, three, four days, we don't want to overspend just to, to not have to make up, you know, three or four snow days. So we're working on that, but there's no promise about whether that's going to be acceptable by the state in the future.
Yeah, like I say, if you could predict what, if it's going to be a snow day, well, then you can just take over as a weather person too.
Watch out, Joe Winters.
That's the whole idea, is predicting correctly.
I had one other thing. So two weeks from tonight, the 26th, remember in October is the month that we have a second board meeting. So we'll have an update on our priority initiatives two weeks from tonight.
All right. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned.